To call the order, the Tuesday, July the 12th meeting of the Griffin City Commission. At this time, I'd like to call the Reverend Tracy Stone to come forward to bring our invocation. Tracy's new to our community. He is the pastor of Center Point Church, a church that's been heavily involved in leaving some of the woes of our community and especially the Spalding County tornado. His church has ministered and provided housing, lodging, not housing, but lodging, and are about to complete rebuilding a house for one of the victims of the tornado. So Tracy, if you would come forward, it is our honor to have you with us tonight. And would everyone please stand?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share, I was flying the other day, and I saw in a magazine a promotional for a motivational picture. It had a red sports car going at a high rate of speed down a mountain cliff, and the caption, and it had a hairpin turn just over the next cliff that the driver couldn't see. And the caption at the bottom of the picture read, "A bend in the road is not the end of the road unless you fail to make the turn." A bend in the road is not the end of the road unless you fail to make the turn. Proverbs 16:9 says, "A man plans in his heart his ways, but the Lord orders his steps." It is my prayer and is my desire that as a city, as a spiritual father and leader in this church, that we make the bends and the turns, knowing that we plan, but the Lord orders our steps. May we pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in our Savior, your Son's name, Jesus Christ. We ask that you would show favor among us tonight, that you would give us the wisdom of Solomon, that you would touch each and every person that's in this room tonight, and even those that are not here, touch our city, Father. We ask you to minister to each council member. We ask you to touch our mayor, touch all of the participants tonight. May they be fair, and just, and honest. Father, may we treat others as you, we would want to be treated. Father, may your blessings be on this meeting, give us travel mercies as we go home, as we do what you've called us to do. We speak the blessings in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Reverend Stone has to go to another meeting at his church tonight that has to do with the tornado victim, so we are excusing him, and we thank him for coming to bring our invocation. Okay, at this time, we will review the financials for the month ending May the 31st, 2011. Director of Administrative Services, Marcus Schwab, will address. Good evening, Marcus.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item on the list will be the cash balance report. And this is just merely a quick presentation as of the balances as of May 31st.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
On the OPEB fund, the cash, there's a great deal of cash in that. Is that because the money hasn't been transferred yet to cover the OPEB requirement for the year? Is that why it's accumulated in there?
That's correct. There is a final transfer that gets taken care of at the end of the year.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you accruing for that?
Yes, sir.
I hope you've already done it.
Yes.
Okay. If it's the fiscal year you're worried about. Okay, anything else? Anything you want to point out to us, Marcus, that we should pay attention to?
Not really. There's one transaction in the payroll account that puts the position a little bit upside down. That's a timing difference between the end of the month and the first of the month, when we actually shuffle cash around. So it's nothing there to be concerned about. In the cash report, really, there's nothing to speak of.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
Well, are you going to shift over to the other statements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Unless you have some questions.
No, no, I'm done with that one. I'm ready for the next.
We'll move into the local option sales tax with the single sheet and the SPOS. Looks like we're tracking it around 3.2 million. We're going to hit the target on the local option sales tax, just shy above 3.3 million. And on the special purpose local option sales tax, it looks like we're going to achieve our numbers there as well. The budget was 1.6 million. We've already collected 1.8, so we're going to be well within the limits Moving on to the interim statements by fund, this is all funds, and we have roughly 8% left for the year, one month for June. And we're at 97%. So if we look at 92% versus 97% on the revenues, we're pretty much where we need to be.
On the flip side of that, both the all funds and the general funds, we're about 86% on the expenses. So that means we're doing very, very well, or there's money to be spent, or will be spent for the end of the year, or some of both?
There will be an accrual that's done at the end of the year for payroll dollars, and for anything else that comes in through the month of June, there's typically about a two-week delay, and that will make up the difference, and we'll be very close to the numbers. But I believe we'll be under budget, but we will be close to the number.
Any other questions? Ryan?
Just...
No questions?
I'm curious if you already took a peek at June for the most part, and have a general concept, but I assume by that statement that you think we're going to come in?
I already have the numbers issued for the temporary, or the preliminary numbers have gone out already today.
I know it'd be hard to not go in, and look at all the years ending up.
So having already looked at the numbers, you can forecast we're going to be pretty close to the numbers, right?
Yes.
You're a wizard.
Okay. If I may address one more issue, the Spalding tornado on page 12. We've incurred roughly $138,000 worth of expenses, and we're collecting $253,000. The difference is about 111. That $253,000 is the direct expenses that were incurred for the tornado, in addition to the indirect expenses that FEMA provides. For example, when we run a generator at eight hours or 16 hours at, you know, $200 the hour, that's what they'll reimburse. That includes the accommodation for the fuel, depreciation, and other ancillary expenses. So there's an indirect rate that's given for the equipment hours, and that's the reason we're seeing a little bit extra coming in for the tornado.
Okay.
So it would be made whole or better?
It's going to be made better, it looks like.
The whole concept is to be made whole, not necessarily better. It just so happens that it looks like we're getting a better rate, but we've used a lot of the equipment. We've used a lot of fuel, et cetera, which they do not pay for directly. They pay for that indirectly with that indirect rate.
Well, and it's good to know. When do you anticipate the funds will come in?
I don't know. Probably in 90 days. I'm guessing, I'm guessing.
Right. Now, when will you turn all this over to the auditors? When will you turn all the records over to the auditors, since we've basically closed out, we're closing out the fiscal year?
We're going to be scheduling the auditors here around mid-August. So between now and at the end of the month, we're preparing trial balance information. We're getting all the check registers ready, and basically have all the lead sheets prepared and ready to go for the auditors to show up in mid-August. The agenda item today includes the engagement letters for the audit engagement.
Right, I saw that.
And one thing we've done differently this year than we have in the past, we've actually bumped up by 60 days the delivery of the audit report. So rather than delivering December 31, the target date is now November 1.
Years ago, when I first got elected, it was always September 30, but they never made it. That would be nice if you get it 60 days in advance of the December 31st.
Last year, I believe, we got it right just before, right before Thanksgiving. So our goal is to bump that up another two weeks and have it delivered in our hands by November 1.
Okay, very good.
So just, Madam Chairman, just to clarify on the tornado issue, I don't want our audience to get the misconception that we're actually making more than we spent on the tornado. That's not the issue at all. The indirect cost actually pays for all the administrative costs that go along with operating the equipment and everything that goes along with it. So I don't want anybody to misunderstand that we're getting more back than we spent. That's not the case. Those are good points.
And again, the, your synopsis of our, the economy and everything is a great read as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we will go on into citizen comments. Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing, or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. I reserve the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Having said that, is there anyone on my left who would like to come forward and address the commission? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Willie David Jester. My address is 452 Palace Street, Griffin, Georgia.
What was the street, I'm sorry?
452 Palace Street.
How can we help you, sir?
On July the 3rd, I had got a phone call from, from my, from my kid's mother stating that my son was out of, was all out of his mind and everything. And soon as I get over there, I guess, I guess over there and they give me some, something, they said somebody had gave him some, some kind of pain medicine to take. And he was all out of his head, and it scared me because I'd never seen him in that condition. And I called the param, I had them to call the paramedic to come and see after him. Well, when the paramedic get there, the police officer come. He breaks and tried to run. He was already out of his head. He breaks and tried to run. They takes it, put him in handcuffs, put the knees in the neck and put him in handcuffs. And on the way back from after they had put, put the knees in the neck, on the way back, he called one of my name. And I'm trying to figure out why it took so much force for him to beat him up like they did. After he called one of my name, he snatched him out the other police officer hand, picked him up, and body slammed him back to the ground while he was in handcuffs. And he left and went on, they took him out to the county. Then when we last called him, we talked to Major, Major Daniel. Major Daniel told us that he had two counts of obstruction on him. One was in his house, and one was in the car where he was banging his head. Well, now, when we go to get him out, he got eight or nine more charges that were added in there. And I'm trying to figure out, are we still, are we turning back or are we going forward? I thought that the city was a servant to protect you, not to beat you up like they beat him up. And I talked to Darryl Dix, and he told me sometime they have the unit necessary for us. I asked him, I said, "So once they get him in handcuffs and start walking him back to the car, is it all right for him to snatch it?" Because he called one of my name, he wasn't even in his right state of mind. So you go, and I kept begging them over and over again, "If you please, take him to the hospital, let's see what's going on." They gave me the pills, and I gave it to the paramedic. And the sergeant that was in charge, the paramedic gave it to him, he gave it to another police officer, and the police officer said, "Well, I guess it's, I guess it could be some pain medicine, could be this." I wanted to know what it was that made him act so crazy. And I, and we went to get him out. Now he got six or seven, maybe eight, nine more charges on him. And I asked them, "What were the charges?" They told me, Officer Dix, Officer Darryl called me and told me that they dropped one of the obstruction charges in the house, and now they charging him with terroristic threat and all this kind of stuff. And I want to know, is we, is it time to stop turning back, or, you know, we pulling together? We supposed to pull together. If you come up and one of them got your kid in handcuffs, you would not like the way they slammed him to the ground.
Thank you, sir. Is there someone that you would like to talk to here that Mike can assist you?
We've, I've already talked to Mr. Jester, and he's already talked to the police department, and we have an internal affairs investigation going on currently based on his complaint. And after that investigation is complete, I'll be glad to share it with you.
Okay, thank you. Well, it sounds like it's being taken care of, but we appreciate you coming tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything to get us to talk about the various findings?
Well, it's a public hearing, and you're going to have an opportunity then, Terry, but you can talk if you want to.
Is it my turn?
If you're, you're on the right side of the room, you're on the left side of the room, but the right side if you want to speak. We're going to have a public...
No.
No.
Terry, your parents have come up to trouble Terry.
In a minute, you'll speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want to.
I was going to let you speak, Terry, because I knew what you were going to say. Is there anyone else on my left who would like to come forward and make a statement, please? Or bring any matter to our attention? All right, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Vicki Jester. I'm the, I'm the mom of the, of the young man that, that was out of the mind. My father, I mean, my children, they slipped out.
Vicki, I'm sorry, could you please go to your address? Maybe I missed.
Okay. My address is 1723 Carrington Drive, Griffin. My, my son's father left out some, some information. As, as they got my son to, to the car, I asked, I asked them, I asked two of the officers, "Are you taking him to the house fitter? Where, where are you taking him to?" They told me, "Yes, ma'am, we're taking him to the house fitter." I get to the house fitter, and they didn't even take him to the house fitter. They took him straight to the county. So then I get, I go back to my son's house, and an officer was still there. And I asked him, I, well, I told him, I said, "Well, I went out to the house fitter, they didn't take my son to the house fitter. So can you tell me why they didn't take him to the house fitter?" Because if he's out of his mind and, and doing all this stuff, my thing, it wasn't so much of what he had said or whatever. My thing was, let's find out what's going on. Let's find out what he's taking. Let's get his stomach pumped. Let's, let's see something, then we'll, we'll take the next step from there. Because if he broke the law, then I know he's supposed to be taken care, you know, punished or whatever.
Right.
But my first thing is, he'll help. Let's pump his stomach out, and let's find out. Send, send the pills to the lab or whatever it need to be done, instead of just saying, assuming what the, I could assume, because I, I know a lot about some medicine, or different types of pill or whatever. I could have assumed, but I didn't want to assume. I wanted to know for sure what it were. So then they tell me, "Well, we have somebody out to the jail that can, that can detect it or whatever." But still, they can't detect it just by looking at him and seeing the way he's acting and say, "Well, he took this and he took that." And, and, I mean, that, that was my concern. So I'm, I'm curious why? Because you can't just really be charged with something, or, or just say, "Okay, he took this and..."
Right. Ms. Jester, you, you heard the city manager tell you that there's an investigation going on, that there's an in-house investigation?
I heard, uh-huh.
Okay, you will get the results of that. So all I can do is, please be patient a few more days while they conduct that investigation, and then they will get back to you with the results.
Okay.
And we appreciate you coming, and I understand your, your concern as a mother. But they are investigating this, so there will be answers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left who would like to come forward and, and address the commission? If not, is there anyone on my right who would like to come forward and address the commission? Okay, well, now we'll go into the public hearing section of our agenda. Public hearings are conducted to allow public, public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. All right? Our first item here is to receive comments regarding an amendment to the Code of the City of Griffin, Georgia, at Article 6, Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Ordinance at Section 82-143, hereby increasing the participation rate from three to seven times present and future millage rates. Director of Planning and Development Services, Frederick Gardner, will address.
Good evening, Madam Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're here today, we did a presentation to the board back in May regarding a request to increase our participation in the toxin center, what we call our Blight Tox Ordinance, from three times the millage rate to seven times the millage rate. As part of your agenda, you should see the agenda summary that kind of lays out what a house that's currently valued at $36,000 would pay in city taxes, and when you factor in what they're currently paying, and is they're currently participating in the program, three times the millage rate would produce somewhere around $378, and at seven times the millage rate, $884. As you know, we, we've got somewhere close to 100 properties participating, and at the end of the fiscal year, we have right around $1,100 and something that was part of this program. To make this more of an incentive for folks to either rehab their structures, demolish those structures, or simply deed them over to an entity that can either do both, or redevelop the property, we're asking for us to go up on the millage rate participation from three to seven. I will be giving a presentation on August 1st to the Spalding County Commissioners to look at them participating as part of this program. And obviously, if someone allows the Tox to bill up, there's a potential for our land bank to go to work where they're addressing some of these issues. So there is a method to the madness to some degree on how we deal with these, but we still want to utilize this tool in the toolbox, but we want to strengthen the tool in the toolbox. So rather than pulling out the screwdriver, we want to pull out the big wrench to start getting tightened down on and making it a little bit more onerous for these folks to, to do something with the property.
Right. This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to come forward and address this issue? If not, we'll go on to item number two. Receive comments regarding a request for variance from the City of Griffin zoning ordinance, Section 416, accessory structure requirements under the planned commercial district for the property located at 112 Oak Street, effectively reducing the side yard setbacks from the minimum required 15 feet to six inches. Director of Planning and Zoning, Frederick Gardner, will address.
Yes, ma'am. This is variance request 11 VAR 06, application submitted by Dr. Terry Nguyen. He is requesting a reduction in the side yard setback to allow for an accessory structure to provide cover for antique vehicle. There's currently a space in which, I think, Dr. Nguyen utilizes to park his car now, but he wanted to be a covered parking. As you know, staff hasn't seen any variance that have been grounded in the district as a release of this use, so staff recommend the denial of the request. Understood, Dr. Terry is here to...
All right, this is a public hearing, and you're now able to come and state your case here.
My office, 112 West Oak Street.
Very good.
I'm Terry Nguyen. Okay, I'm a practicing optometrist there.
Still practicing.
If you own West Oak and facing in front of my office, to the left is United Bank property. Between my building, I got, and the United, adjacent to it is a parking space where I park my car. And I've been working on this car for 13 years and finally got it done. It's a 1951 MG Clipper Blue, and it is beautiful. I last drove it 37 years ago. I want to protect it with a shed. I got blessings from the president of United Bank, Jim Oldtree. He says it's fine. By the name, by the way, the car's name, MG, is Maggie, and we want to protect Maggie, and that's my reason.
And this is just a simple little covered parking to park on, and up there.
Full post stand shed with a metal top.
Very good, thank you. All right, being a public hearing, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and address this issue? If not, we will go on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is to consider approval of minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on June the 14th, 2011, and minutes of the workshop on June the 14th, 2011.
Madam, I found both sets of minutes to be in good order, unless somebody has a correction. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? We have a motion? Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Thank you. All right, we're now into our regular agenda. Item number four, consider an amendment to the Code of the City of Griffin, Georgia, at Article 6, Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Ordinance at Section 82-143, hereby increasing the participation rate from three to seven times present and future millage rates.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the amendment as presented.
Do, and do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, all right, it is unanimous, thank you. Item number five, consider a request for variance from the City of Griffin zoning ordinance, Section 416, accessory structure requirements under the planned commercial district for the property located at 112 Oak Street, effectively reducing the side yard setbacks from the minimum required 15 feet to six inches.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You press it.
Yes.
Is this, it's a, is this a temporary structure? Is this some...
No.
It's not. It's permanent structure.
Okay. You, you say it's going to be four posts, just like a shed, but will it be concreted into the ground, or?
Well, yeah.
I mean...
It'd be concreted, you know, after finish the, my office is a, a barnyard, great stuff, and just the posts and the timber, which they painted the back. Yeah, it's going to be concreted into the ground, always a bit strong.
You must be expecting for Maggie to be around a long time.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're going to take care of Maggie in the proper manner.
I'm just glad we had a, a request come to us where the thing hadn't already been done.
That's true.
On the...
That is absolutely true. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. You have your, your shelter now. Okay, item number six, consider a one-year agreement with leads online in the amount of $5,890 for the purpose of identifying merchandise and persons suspected of crimes. Do we have any questions on this? The chief is here.
I do, I do have a question. This says pawn shops, which I understand, also says metal, metal dealers. Is this going to actually, something that metal dealers?
We already have it at the metal dealers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Okay. But the, I guess I know that, I did ask my questions properly. But does it not have a description of all the, what was pawned and all, are the metal dealers giving you descriptions of what it is?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
If you steal a old-fashioned porcelain bathtub, they will put it in as 400 pounds of galvanized steel.
Oh.
So it's, it's the weight of the metal.
And it would be worth what? A lot of money?
So the, so the pawn, it has real effect with the pawn dealers, but minimal effect with the metal dealers.
Well, it at least gives me a trail to follow as far as who brought it, because they have to use photographic ID.
Okay.
And I can at least go back and make an arrest on something that I can identify.
Right.
I have a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Item number seven, consider a request to declare, to declare surplus 11 vehicles from the police department.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this surplus as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the surplus. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Item number eight, consider the purchase of 3600 450 series Neptune water meters for automatic meter reading from Delta Municipal Supply. We've been working on this a while. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Judy, thank you. All right, item number nine, award various chemical bids for water and wastewater treatment chemicals. Director of Public Works and Utilities, Dr. Keller, will answer any questions you might have.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this list of chemical purchases and the bid prices as presented.
All right, are there any questions? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Item number 10, consider the purchase of a 2011 Ford E350 Econoline Cargo Van from Allen Vigil Ford, offstate contract in the amount of $22,144 for the Water Wastewater Division. Do we have any, do you want any questions answered on this? I know it's for the Water Leaks Division.
The present one is really grim. I move we get them a new one.
I have a question.
Okay.
A second for the purpose of...
All right.
Um, did, did we get a bid from our local Ford dealer on this? Um, did, um, did we get a bid from, um, our local Ford dealer on this?
Uh, I'd have to ask Phil, we took it off state contract.
Okay.
No, we, we did not, we just take it off state contract, it's already been bid out.
Okay, so that means what?
Means that Alan Vigil got their state contract?
You don't have to go through the bid process if we buy directly from state contract.
Uh-huh, so is that, that, is Alan Vigil who we purchased when we buy Ford? That, who, that is who-
This is one of the exceptions to the bid requirements.
Okay, so-
But initially all-
The local Ford dealer is not under state contract?
They have, uh, they have to, state contract is when the state goes out and gets bids from all dealers, and essentially the low bidder for the state is awarded the state contract, so, you know, whether or not Alan Vigil was included on, on their bid process or not, I don't know, but-
I, I'm, the local Speedway, huh? That's what I'm asking, is-
Yeah, I mean, you know-
Just curious.
It's kinda the same thing, we'll do as little as well, if it's on state contract, essentially it's been bid out by the state itself, uh, over, across the state, to get the lowest amount for government-
Speedway would have had an option to put in a bid for the state contract once it was bid, I don't, I don't know if they did or not.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Item number eleven, consider approval of streets for Georgia Tr- Department of Transportation, uh, local maintenance and improvement grant, which is called a LMEG grant. Uh, and have you all had an opportunity to look at the streets that, uh, Brandt sent us as suggestions? Will we be doing these this year?
Um, I, last year, LMEG didn't get funded.
Right.
So, we're hoping that this year it will. They're going through the list of projects now, so I would venture to say, it, it used to be called LARP, and y'all know how that works. You gotta get streets ready by November, and we see them the following summer or sometimes on that, so, I would think that we would, um, see it sometime in the spring when the weather breaks.
Okay, um, the, these streets are, is this, and in addition to the ones that we already ate, or what?
Uh, no ma'am, this is a list just for what the state's gonna, under LMEG, um, which used to be LARP, okay? We are submitting a list of streets to them, saying that these are the streets we're gonna su- uh, do, there's a ratio. I have this real fancy formula that tells us we have basically about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that would be appropriated to our city through that formula, and these are the bigger streets that are, uh, with higher traffic volumes that we wanted to see paved, and we also wanted to, um, get your input if you wanted another additional street added. We roughly four hundred and seventy-seven thousand gives you about five miles of paving. It costs about eighty-five, eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars to pave, uh, uh, lane mile. I didn't put North Hill Street on there because we have the LCI coming up, and it's gonna be totally reconfigured, and it would make, kind of make us look stupid to, uh, to have it resurfaced, and then, uh, two years from now, tear the whole thing up.
Okay.
This is a-
That's what you want to hear, what?
I, I thought about you, Ms. Ward, when I, when I put this list, I should have put that comment on there. It, that's under the LCI, and it'll be totally reconfigured, yes sir.
We made out a, uh, listing, some of the streets that would be-
Additional streets?
Uh, additional streets, um, for, uh, uh, splosh the pave or for, um, LMEG.
We'll be able to take a look at that listing.
Uh, yes, you're, hopefully, look, the collections are doing rather well. Uh, I'm s- working with Adam on a couple things right now, and hopefully we should be able to do some more paving next year, and you can, will be able to submit a list to us, uh, for that.
Well, if LMEG hasn't changed from LARP basically, in that they can pick any of those they jolly well please, any part of them, they do what they want.
Well, the rules have changed, uh, rules of engagement, I guess you'd say, because it's, it's always a battle, but supposedly, we submit the streets, they say, yeah, they come out and check at them this time, and we have an appropriation according to the formula, and they, the state funded ninety-five million dollars for all the jurisdictions. Our portion of that, due to lane miles, is, um, roughly four thou- four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, but I can't guarantee you that they're not gonna say, well, these are the ones you're gonna pay.
I think a motion to approve.
Um, I'm-
You already made the motion?
No.
No.
Do you do it?
Uh-huh.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, very good.
And Drew, we'll get with Drew and certify the right away, and we'll be good to go.
Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen, consider approval of engagement letters- Number twelve, okay, you're right, I've put a check mark prematurely by. Consider approval by resolutions and budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, for the rollover of six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Funds are for fiscal year two thousand and eleven projects that will be complete in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. Do we have any questions on it?
I was curious, what, the downtown beautification project, what was, what was that one?
We're transferring some money over for Adam, for the Development Authority, and I think Bill, Bill was gone. Bill, Bill took off on me. It's for, for lighting, for downtown, for street lighting, and, uh, part of the parks as well, so we're just gonna roll over some monies to be able to accommodate that.
Part of the, uh, did you say park?
The park, right, was that for the park, for you?
Well, it's, it's, in general, it's fifty thousand dollars of the electric department budgets in their budget for downtown electrical issues that would help us beautify downtown, whether it's street lights, or whether it's removing some poles where we've got some of the old poles, and, you know, some of the alleys are in pretty bad shape when it comes to the wiring, so it's just a lump sum that we put in downtown beautification, and we, we didn't do anything this year because Adam was trying to coordinate his downtown project with his project over there, so we kind of wanted to hold that over until he got his project complete to see if we needed to use it in that area rather than some of the other areas.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second.
Do we, okay.
Don't, who, who?
No, I, I-
We didn't, no matter what.
I move we approve if we have a-
Okay, uh, all right, we have a motion and a second now. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. All right, number thirteen, consider approval of engagement letters for audit services with Malden and Jenkins Certified Public Accountants.
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
A second.
Excuse me.
I have a question.
I lived through it.
Sure.
Yes.
Do we now ever have anybody else, uh, that's all I ever see is Malden and Jenkins, do we ever have anybody else on the list?
We have, the auditors. Yes, excuse me, you may have to take, oh, I don't know, wow, I got a whiff of something in there, it's really making me sick.
Marcus, you were about to say something.
I, I can address that, that question.
Would you please?
Yes ma'am. There is a five-year rotation period that's, that's been sort of, uh, established as a, a best practice to rotate the auditors out every five-year period. We have chosen to keep Malden and Jenkins on for a couple of reasons. Number one, we were switching over the financials two years ago. They were gonna go through and audit the old, uh, system, and then had to audit the new system. It didn't make sense to change out in the middle, and then have the au- a new set of auditors come in and re-audit the old system and the new system, so say, so they can gain confidence levels in the numbers. So we chose to hold off. We chose to hold off a second year because we then converted customer service, and that is also a huge part of our financial system. Now it's time for us to address this issue and put an RFP together in the future, whether it's next year or the year after, but in the next two years, I think we really owe it to ourselves to begin that rotation process, or at least consider it.
Does that, uh, okay, very good. All righty, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the condemnation of three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one acres of property for the maintenance and improvement of a stormwater detention pond owned by Glenn E. Daniels.
How about three point nine three one, let's go, three thousand nine hundred and thirty thousand.
Oh, it's three point nine three one, thank you, acres, oh yeah, you're right, thank you.
This is the resolution by which you would authorize us to commence the filing of condemnation proceedings against the property. This is the Ashton Place Detention Pond-
Right.
That we've had so much trouble with here of late, and it's not being maintained, the city's going to have to take over the maintenance, but to do it, we've got to be able to own it and control it.
Question. Who are we, when we condemn it, who are we purchasing, purchasing it from?
Well, Mr. Daniel is record owner of the property at this time, but this is the parcel. If you look in the resolution, you'll see it's pretty well covered up with liens.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Go back several years, so-
That's what I was asking, who are we gonna be getting from?
We gonna pay the money into court, and then anybody who has a claim to the money will deal with the court and try to get the money out.
Okay.
But, but we'll pay it into court, and in turn, we'll get an order conveying title to the city.
It's interesting that there's twenty-six hundred and seventy dollars in back taxes, so the taxes come off the top.
Right.
The most left they can buy.
I imagine most of it's gonna be one you got being paid to the Spaulding County Tax Mission.
Right, and this has been such a boondoggle for so many years, so, and, and we've maintained it because there was no one else to do it, so, I, I think this is a great chance.
What, what's the timeframe we're talking about, before we can actually begin?
We will be filing the condemnation petition before the end of this month, within, most likely within the next week, and we should have an order conveying title to us before the end of the month.
Man, it's just a matter of public work, one branch can get-
Right, we, we can get said, you know, there'll be legal proceedings which can drag on theoretically for a couple of years, but-
We don't need to pay-
But title will go ahead and pass into the city, we'll do our-
The city is maintaining it right now though, right?
Yeah.
Are we doing, we're doing the same tour, it's just a wrong-
Only what the city's been doing.
Yeah, I mean, we go over there and cut it a couple times a year, we don't do a whole lot to it.
Well, we usually done till I get the complaint, and then we, we go when I get the complaint.
I have a question, have anybody, uh, contacted Mr. Daniel?
Oh yes, he's been, we've talked with him several times, but he can't do anything with it because of the lien situation.
He thought he was getting a good piece of real estate.
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you.
Before you get to your next item, this is the two thousand and nine CDBG project. Commissioners Evans-
Do we need the-
Ward and Holberg were all disqualified on this project, so you will have to accuse yourselves from participation-
Can we just sit here and wait until they-
I think you can just sit here and just not participate.
One, two, three, okay, we have four people that will be able to-
Luckily, it leaves just enough to, to approve a resolution.
Okay, consider approval-
Who, who else?
Uh, Cynthia and Will, and Doug, and Doug, and Doug is also on mission trail.
Okay.
Yeah. All righty, consider approval of a resolution, uh, authorizing the condemnation of property for acquiring permanent easements for Thomaston Mills Sewer Rehabilitation, two thousand and nine CDBG project.
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy, and it passes, thank you.
They finished out everything, all the parcels on that.
I believe, well, I believe it does, I think we had everything else wound up on, on two thousand and nine. Well, I think we've actually got all two thousand and ten. Steve Manley got the agreement signed last week.
Okay, very good. All right, item number sixteen, consider approval of a request from the University of Georgia Griffin campus for seventeen thousand five hundred for support of continuing education program.
Best money we spend each year, I move we approve.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. City Manager, do you have a report?
Just to remind you that, uh, Thursday morning, we'll be on Fox Five, as Fox Five will be here for their Good Day Atlanta Morning Show highlighting the historical city of Griffin, so be sure to get up early and watch Fox Five.
Right.
I think it starts at eight o'clock, uh, Thursday morning, at, uh, at eight o'clock.
Where are they gonna be?
Uh, they're gonna be around town, Hill, Solomon Street, they're going to be, I think, at Safe House Coffee early, going to the Welcome Center, and, uh, have some people talk to them there, and, uh, I think they're going to be highlighting the Tiger Lily.
And, uh, the, uh, sock shop.
The sock shop, uh, Slices Pizza.
Right, and the Slices Pizza.
And a couple of-
I'll explain, they have a reporter and a camera coming to Griffin, and I don't know if you watch, uh, the, the early morning show on Channel Five, and they have, uh, today they highlighted Decatur, and so tomorrow they're gonna, I mean, Thursday morning, they are coming into Griffin to highlight, uh, downtown, and they will be, and it's a beautiful blind, y'all ought to all come, just so that you can see this beautiful blind that's doing the interviews, and, uh, I don't know what our cameraman looks like, but anyway, maybe he'll be a hunk, that'll be nice.
And on that note, speaking of hunks, I'd like to congratulate the city attorney, uh, for- For being recognized, uh, into the Georgia Municipal Association Hall of Fame, and, uh, would like to recommend to the commissioners that maybe we recognize him at a future meeting for that honor.
Pretty nice, oh, I appreciate that.
Yes.
I, I would like to say, I'd, I would like to thank all of you who had something to do with that. Uh, the last two weeks, I've kind of learned that maybe Mr. Smith was one of the lead culprits that, um, neglected to tell me they were going to do that at GMA this year. Uh, I thought I was down there mainly to swear in the incoming presidents and the officers, and, uh, they pulled a slick one on me, but, uh-
I'm sorry, it's often, it's not often you can out-slick a lawyer.
I, that's true, but I think Hewitt's fault too, but I, I do appreciate it.
Well, I have to tell you, Drew was really surprised, and he was moved to tears, almost to tears, it made me proud of him. Okay, uh, Ryan, any comment? Okay, Will, any comment?
Like I said once before, congratulation on your, uh, uh, recognition, Drew.
Thank you, Will.
Ms. Ward?
No comment.
Okay, uh, Shiah?
Well, I also like to congratulation, uh, congratulation, and I'm still looking for that hump though. Also, I would like, uh, uh, say we had a wonderful time in Savannah, and it was very, uh, I, I learned a lot, uh, there. And I also want to say about the commissioners here, uh, I know when, uh, when, uh, Commissioner Morrow was running for, was campaigning in oh nine, he made a statement, something that caught my attention about team, to use the word team, and, uh, and I want to say and thank these, these commissioners, uh, for trusting each other, respecting each other, and, uh, working together with each other, uh, as a team. Congratulations and thanks.
Okay, thank you, Shiah. Mr. Morrow?
I too congratulate Drew, I think it's chubbed, not humped, didn't you? But that's all I got.
You didn't expect that either, did you Drew? You, you may have to talk to, uh, Mr., to, uh, Mr. Smith afterwards. Uh, we're all very proud of anything that comes our way because we know how hard the citizens and our, our employees work toward making Griffin a better place. Uh, with that in mind, other than, uh, congratulating Drew again, which I'd already done down in Savannah, uh, at our next meeting, uh, in the morning, after our workshop, I'd like to have a, not a long, but I'd like to have kind of a staff retreat, a mini-staff retreat, so that we can, uh, come to terms on some things that have come forward and kind of, uh, solidify this fact that we are a team. So, uh, keep that in mind, that we'll be having a mini-retreat on, uh, that morning of our, which will be, uh, July the twenty-fourth. If this is, that's May, no, that's not right, July the twenty-sixth, July the twenty-sixth. Uh, having said that, uh, do I have a motion for us to adjourn? Okay, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.